Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We're ready to begin this evening's board meeting. The school board meeting of May 2nd, 2017 is called to order. The time is 6:01 PM. At this time, we request that all electronic devices be turned off or be put into the silent mode. Also, we ask that you refrain from using flash photography except during the special presentations portion of the meeting. We would like to take this opportunity to remind the members of the public of the district's mission, which is to ensure that each student achieves his or her highest personal potential, and also of the district's vision to be a world-class school system. Well, how about Littleton Elementary's hooting owlets? Aren't they amazing? We're so honored to have them entertaining us this evening. They're from Dr. Carrie D. Robinson, Littleton Elementary School, under the direction of their music teacher, Sherri Donnell. The chorus consists of 3rd, 4th, and 5th grade students who work extremely hard every week. At this time, they will be performing "We're All in This Together," from High School Musical. Please sit back and enjoy the happy sounds of the hooting owlets.
We're all in this together. Once we know that we are, we're our stars. And we see that, we're all in this together. And it shows when we stand hand in hand, make our dreams come true. We're all in this together. Once we reach, we can fly, no downside, we can make it. We're all in this together. Once we see there's a chance that we have, and we take it. Owlets everywhere, wave your hands up in the air. That's the way we do it, let's get to it, come on everyone!
Okay, we're gonna take a brief recess while we clear the performance area. Thank you very much for coming. Ladies and gentlemen, we're ready to continue this evening's board meeting. I know we all got excited because that was awesome entertainment. Cynthia Lewis is this evening's student representative. She's an 11th grader in the honors program at East Lee County High School. She speaks Creole and a little French. Cynthia's clubs and activities include, so just relax because this is gonna take a while, Vice President of the Class of 2018, National Honor Society, National Society of High School Scholars, President Fellowship of Student Athletes, President Infused Youth, Key Club, Student Government Association, Drum Line, Captain of the Step Team, Debate Club, and Sewing Club. She is also Captain of the Varsity Track Team and a member of the Varsity Cross Country She enjoys volunteering in her community, playing music, reading, running, and sewing clothes. After high school, Cynthia plans on studying pre-med and music and aspires to become a trauma surgeon or a physician's assistant. And did I mention that she's a member of our school board student advisory committee also? Welcome Cynthia. This evening's agenda includes the invocation, the pledge of allegiance, four recognitions, one acknowledgement, public comment, consent action items which include three items under resolutions, one item under executive services, six items under academic services, two items under business services, five items under human resources, and three items under operations. Also, three superintendent's recommendations, and two items for public hearing, and four items under other business. Board members, is there a motion to adopt the agenda? Moved by Mrs. LaRiviere.
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Patrico. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries 7-0. Please remain seated while Mrs. Morgan delivers the invocation, after which Mrs. LaRiviere will lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Mrs. Morgan?
Ladies and gentlemen, we are meeting here as a school board and community to advance educational opportunities for every child in this district. We want to help our students be the best that they can be. Let us take this moment to consider the importance of the responsibility each one of us has in raising and educating the children of this community. Let us remember to thank every member of this learning community for whom educating children is a calling and a passion. Let us be patient as we work together, be open and transparent in our conduct, and be prepared to embrace challenge and change. Let us strive to do good here, to be honest and ethical in our dealings, and to serve the children of this district to the best of our abilities. Thank you for joining us this evening.
Thank you. Please rise now for the pledge of allegiance.
Introducing the cadet presenting the national colors tonight is Sergeant Major Jose Torres from South Fort Myers High School's JROTC program. Sergeant Major Torres retired from the United States Army after 22 years of active duty service, and is a veteran of Desert Shield and Desert Storm.
Thank you. The national color for our pledge of allegiance tonight are presented by Cadet Command Sergeant Major Uriah Robinson, Brigade Command Sergeant Major of the WOOPAC Academy Junior ROTC Program. He is a member of the school varsity basketball team and the JROTC National Rank Competitor Drill Team, which plays fourth in the nation for his armed exhibition duel this year. Cadet Command Sergeant Major Robinson has recently enlisted in the Oklahoma National Guard and will be attending Oklahoma State University where he will be pursuing a degree in accounting. Please join me in saying the pledge of allegiance.
The pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated, and after the special presentations portion of the agenda, a brief recess will be called to allow those who wish to leave the boardroom an opportunity to do so.
I would like to invite the following individuals from South Fort Myers High School to join me at the lectern. Principal Mr. Ed Matthews and student Mohammed Babaker. From Cape Coral High School, Principal Dr. Jeff Sparrow and students Drew Ricci and Logan White. The Sunshine State Scholars Recognition Program for high school students began in 1997 to recognize excellence in mathematics and science. It has since evolved into a program designed to recognize Florida's top high school science, technology, engineering, and math students, and recruit them to pursue their post-secondary education in Florida. Throughout September and October each year, every school district selects their top STEM 11th grade students based on established criteria. Recently, the Lee County School District was pleased to announce that South Fort Myers High School student Mohammed Babaker and Cape Coral High School student Drew Ricci are this year's Lee County Sunshine State Scholars. Logan White of Cape Coral High School was named as this year's alternate. The school board and superintendent are pleased to recognize Mohammed and Drew as this year's Lee County Sunshine State Scholars and Logan as this year's alternate. We are proud of the accomplishments of these students and wish them the best in all of their future endeavors.
I would like Lee Hughes, Program Administrator for Title I Intervention Programs, to please join me at the lectern. The 62nd Annual State Science and Engineering Fair of Florida was held in Lakeland on March 28th to the 30th, 2017. Of the 32 students from southwest Florida that participated, five students from the school district of Lee County received high honors. I'd like the following students to please come forward, and any school representatives, please stay up here for a group picture, and if the audience would please hold your applause till the end. In third place categories, Kayden Musco, 6th grade student at Varsity Lakes Middle School, junior division, animal sciences category. His project is titled "Moonr, the Final Answer." Sierra Edelstein, 8th grade student at Gulf Middle, junior division, earth and environmental sciences category. Her project is titled "The Pearl of the Ocean: Do Fresh Water Releases from Lake Okeechobee Affect the Filtration Rate of Eastern Oysters, Crostestria for Janica, in Southwest Florida Estuaries?" So you know how important that is, I can hardly pronounce it. Caspian Schultz, 6th grade student at North Fort Myers Academy for the Arts, junior division, microbiology category. Her project is titled "Strike, Spare Me the Bacterium." And Dahlia Dry, 10th grade student at Fort Myers High, senior division, mathematics and computational sciences category. Her project is titled "Looking Into the Past for Insight on the Future Predictive Analytics and Data Science for Time Series Data." Received a third-place category award. In addition to her state science fair award, Dahlia's research project is one of six projects from the Thomas Alva Edison Kiwanis Regional Science and Engineering Fair that will be traveling to Los Angeles, California this May to compete in the Intel International Science and Engineering Fair. And the first-place category award goes to Morgan Barkerst, 8th grade student at North Fort Myers Academy for the Arts, junior division, chemistry category. Her project is titled "BPA Free?" Let's see. The study of BPA in plastics using a UV vis spectro photometer. Spectro photometer. There you go. The board members and superintendent are pleased to recognize and congratulate these students for representing the school district of Lee County so well in this state competition.
Littleton was amazed of all the hoopin' and hollerin' that was going on when they were performing. That's because we're, we have a house full of thesbiens. The Florida High School Thesbian All-State Festival for Drama Students was held March 15th through 17th in Tampa. A large delegation of approximately 113 high school thesbiens from eight Lee County schools attended and earned all-state recognitions and awards in various areas to include large group musical, small group musical, ensemble acting, duet musical, costume construction, one-act plays, and publicity design, and much more. As I call out the schools, would everyone from that particular school come down and we'll have a group photo, and then we'll bring in the next group. We'll start with Cypress Lake High School. Fort Myers High School. Ida Baker High School. Island Coast High School. Astero High School. Astero, isn't Clayton always lucky? It always works that way. Lehigh Senior High. Last one for this evening, North Fort Myers High School.
I would like to invite Dr. the following principals. Ms. Sharice Trent from Edison Park Creative Expressive Arts School, and Dr. Thomas Mullins from North Fort Myers Academy for the Arts. The Florida Department of Education, FDOE, supports a complete and comprehensive education that includes dance, music, theater, visual arts, for all Florida students. To help achieve the goal, the Florida Department of Education, in partnership with the Florida Alliance for the Arts Education, FAAE, seeks to identify model arts education programs in schools throughout Florida. The Florida Arts Model Schools, FAMs, program recognizes schools that offer exemplary programs in any of the four arts disciplines and provide mentorship to schools with undeserved or emerging arts program. An existing or potential partnership, schools must be identified by FAMs applicants as part of the application process. These two schools were the only two in the state of Florida with the award of Comprehensive Arts Achieve Model School. The school board and superintendent are pleased to recognize Edison Park Creative Expressive Arts School, under the direction of Ms. Sharice Trent, principal, and North Fort Myers Academy for the Arts, under the direction of Dr. Thomas Mullins, principal, for being designated for the Florida Arts Model Schools, 2017
The character word for May is patience. The ability to wait calmly without complaining. Quote, "Patience, persistence, and perspiration make an unbeatable combination for success." Napoleon Hill. The design you see displayed on the screens was created by Louis Bert Sehys, a 12th grade student at Astero High School.
Thank you Cynthia. At this time, we'll take a brief recess to allow anyone who would like to leave the boardroom an opportunity. Thank you very much for coming and get home safe. Ladies and gentlemen, please take your seats. The next item on the agenda is public comment. Mr. Martin, will you please address the agenda item of public comment?
School board policy provides the opportunity at this point in the meeting to address the board concerning any matter on this meeting's agenda, or any other matter relevant to the operation of the school district. If you completed a card and submitted that to me before the meeting, you'll be called in the order of the cards submitted. If you did not submit a card but still wish to address the school board this evening, the school board chair, Ms. Fisher, will give you an opportunity in a moment to express that desire. Rules concerning public comment are posted at the back of the room. This board does not respond during public comment time to remarks made by speakers. At the conclusion of public comment time, the school board chair may address concerns raised by speakers, or may assign responsibility to the superintendent to do so. Speakers are expected to act in a respectful manner. Those who fail to do so after being warned by the meeting chair may be required to leave the meeting. Disruptive attacks on individuals are prohibited. Ms. Fisher, I have 11 cards this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. Is there anyone on the right side of the auditorium who did not fill out a card and wishes to speak? Please stand and state your name. Thank you. Anyone on the left side of the auditorium? Would you please stand and state your name? I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
Ed Kelly.
Ed Kelly, thank you. Anyone else?
Ladovic Kimble.
Could you repeat that one more time, sir?
I have a card for you, sir. Thank you.
Oh, okay.
I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Jeffrey. Mr. Martin, will you please call the first card?
Yes, the time allowed for speakers, three minutes. Due to the large number of speakers, I'll call the speakers in groups of five. The first time I call your name, please come to this lecture. The second time I call your name, you may proceed with your comments. The first five speakers are Frederick Morgan, Rachel Bass, Ladovic Kimble, Judy Alves, and Kathy Mayo. Mr. Morgan.
Good evening, Dr. Atkins and the Lee County School Board. My name is Frederick Dunbar Morgan II, and I'm the Political Action Committee Chair for the NAACP. As all of you are aware, the NAACP's position for the Lee County School Board is to redistrict now in 2017 and end inequality in our education system. By redistricting, a new map will be drawn with the goal of creating a district in which a minority has an opportunity to be elected. Four of our current sitting school board members, which is Ms. Patrica, Dr. Cuckle, Ms. Julia Velli, and Ms. Morgan, ran in 2016 on the statement that they would support redistricting in 2017. And many of them of you received endorsements from local organizations when you were taking that as a stand. We thank you for that. The NAACP has been working on this issue for many, many years, as you all are aware. And we have been very careful to follow the guidance of our state and our national officials with the NAACP, and the experts in redistricting from the Southern Coalition for Social Justice out of Durham, North Carolina. These are experts who evaluated our county population growth and trends, and drew a fair map. What bothers me and our partners is that the school board has taken on more of an adversarial kind of position, and did not even consider the NAACP's map. After the EDAC, which is your Educational Diversity Committee, unanimously accepted the map, we want to work with the school board in creating a fair and equitable redistricting map. Other counties and school boards across the state of Florida have been able to accomplish this goal. Our question is, and I ask you, why can't we? Thank you.
Rachel Bass.
Justice of Southwest Florida. I would like to start with a word, starts with P, just like the word up here. The word is privilege. Privilege is when you think something isn't a problem because it isn't a problem for you personally. People who are being directly affected by lack of representation on the school board have gone to great lengths to explain to you all why this is a problem. When the school board was asked to look at different redistricting plan, after the one the NAACP provided was dismissed for questionable reasons, no one on the board was interested. No one on the all-white school board thought that redistricting, in order to make sure that the voices of minority voters were being heard, and to increase the chances for diversity on the school board, thought that it was important enough to even discuss. You all have the privilege to ignore this problem because it isn't affecting you personally. You all have, you all also have the power to continue to stand in the way of a more just system. If we continue to only work on issues that we have prioritized, only the ones that affect people like you and me, we will never truly be serving the needs of all of Lee County's children. Instead of asking the board to move towards including a seat at the table for minority representation, I would like to ask the board, why is it that you all seem to believe that you own the table? Thank you.
And gentlemen, please hold your applause. Thank you.
Ladovic Kimble.
Thank you for opportunity to speak to this noble group of educational leaders. It's great to be part of the greatest profession in the world, which is education. We taught them all. One of the things I'd like to say, I am Ladovic Kimble, I'm a teacher in Lee County at Oakhamic Middle School, I understand I need to tell you that. I'd like to say that the undemocrated at-large election is taxation without representation. Firstly, a large election system is People who are being directly affected by lack of representation on the school board have gone to great lengths to explain to you all why this is a problem. When the school board was asked to look at different redistricting plan, after the one the NAACP provided was dismissed for questionable reasons, no one on the board was interested. No one on the all-white school board thought that redistricting, in order to make sure that the voices of minority voters were being heard and to increase the chances for diversity on the school board, thought that it was important enough to even discuss. You all have the privilege to ignore this problem because it isn't affecting you personally. You all have, you all also have the power to continue to stand in the way of a more just system. If we continue to only work on issues that we have prioritized, only the ones that affect people like you and me, we will never truly be serving the needs of all of Lee County's children. Instead of asking the board to move towards including a seat at the table for minority representation, I would like to ask the board, why is it that you all seem to believe that you own the table? Thank you.
And gentlemen, please hold your applause. Thank you.
Ladovick Kimball.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak to this noble group of educational leaders. It's great to be part of the greatest profession in the world, which is education. We taught them all. One of the things I like to say, I am Ladovick Kimball. I'm a teacher in Lee County at Oak County Middle School. I understand, I need to tell you that. I like to say that the undemocrated at-large election is taxation without representation. Firstly, a large election system is a violation of 1965 Civil Rights Act. Secondly, a large procedure denies minority citizens fair representation. Under the at-large system, minority candidates have no chance of being elected to Lee County Commission or School Board because their voter strength is diluted in a county-wide election. A single-member district election procedure would increase the African-American and Latino-American community opportunity for public service. Third, all Lee County citizens would benefit from an opportunity for responsible representation, improve access to the system, and responsiveness to their desires, wishes, and needs. The elected officials would be closer to the voter, allowing for greater accountability since only the members of the district could vote in that district, thus empowering the voter with greater voice. Fourth, the single-member district system may stop the secession of bringing back Lee County unincorporated areas from seeking city status, dividing county up into little pieces rather than moving toward a futuristic metropolitan government. Fifth, single-member district would reduce voter apathy and increase voter participation. Voters would have an opportunity to elect their own candidates rather than having others in the county to elect someone who may not have been defeated in that district. Namely, there have been nine African-Americans to run for school board, many that warn the district lost the county's set in a precedent. Two Latino-Americans have run for school board, still no representation. Sixth, single-member district election would encourage others to run for office. The campaign would become more personable with less confusion to voters who would have to choose only candidates in their district. In turn, the elected official would have to be more cognizant and sensitive to the needs of the district voters. This would improve communication between the voters, county commissioners, and school board. Subsequently, a more multicultural group may be encouraged to run for office, giving the county more innovative, diverse views, thus reducing the antiquated solutions to problems. Seventh, a single-member district election system would require lower campaign costs for candidates and remove the burden of campaigning in more than one district. That reduces the chances that only those with the most money are elected, though they may not be the most qualified candidates. More importantly, single-member district would reduce the power of special interest group and countywide since their members could not vote for or against one not in their district.
Thank you, Mr. Kimball. Your time's up, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Judy Alves.
Over 128 years ago, when this board was established, women were denied the right to vote. Here's a little history lesson. During that constitutional amendment process to get the vote for women, which requires, you know, three-fourths of the states to ratify it, it was only when a Tennessee legislator's mother sent him a note and said, "Do the right thing," that he voted for it, made the decision right then and there to vote for it, and that was the vote that gave us the 19th Amendment and it became law. So I'm going to assume most of you sitting on this board have some historical perspective and sensitivity to being denied a seat at the decision-making table and how actually, how destructive it was not to have women as part of decision-making for a community. Well, you know, I'm sure in your hearts and minds you feel like you're open-minded and you're fair. I don't doubt you believe that. And I also don't doubt that in your hearts and in your minds, you are fully aware that you could not possibly, on your best day, in your brightest moment, encompass how it feels to be a minority citizen. And it's that experience that you need sitting on the board for a good decision-making process. You know, it's actually your job, because you're sitting on this board, to ensure diverse representation in decision-making. It's just a matter of how you do it. It's not your job to coddle a constituency that pushes back on minority representation. It's that kind of coddling by elected officials, you know, the coddling of the lowest common denominator of thought, that has allowed the whole Jim Crow mindset to seep back into the American psyche. Now, the League of Women Voters of Lee County supports redistricting to bring minority communities, and these are communities of similar interests, a seat at the decision-making table. You know, in order to promote fair and effective representation, that reflects not only the demographics of this county, but very specifically the demographics of the school system that you represent. Now, if this task seems like more work than you envisioned doing this year, which I can appreciate, you have two organizations, the NAACP and the League of Women Voters, who have tremendous experience in this regard. And we are here to help you accomplish a task you must accomplish. We urge you to do the right thing.
Ladies and gentlemen, during public comment, we do not applaud. Thank you.
Speakers six through 10 are James Davis, Stephanie House, Virginia Gottman, Steve Sherman, and Dr. Shirley Chapman. Ms. Mayo.
My name is Kathy Mayo. I'm here today to represent the Fort Myers-Naples Chapter of the National Organization for Women. So what does a women's rights organization have to do with our school district? Now works for social justice and an end to institutional racism. That's how we see the issue of redistricting. Redistrict now. We request of you, we entreat you, we demand that you delay no longer. The time for redistricting is now, not when all the stars are properly aligned and it's politically convenient to take that step. This community has waited long enough for a school board that reflects all of our families. I never imagined that in the year 2017, at the age of 68, I'd be quoting Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. to an all-white elected board. But his message is as relevant today as it was in 1963 when he wrote to a group of white clergymen from the Birmingham jail. He was speaking of segregation then, and we're speaking of equal representation now. Little has changed. In the words of Dr. King, "We know through painful experience that freedom is never voluntarily given by the oppressor. It must be demanded by the oppressed." Frankly, I have yet to engage in a direct action campaign that was well-timed in the view of those who have not suffered unduly from the disease of segregation. For years now, I have heard the word "wait." It rings in the ear of every African-American with piercing familiarity. This "wait" was almost always meant as a "never." We must come to see with one of our distinguished jurists that justice too long delayed is justice denied. Well, the time to wait is over. You have an opportunity to change the composition of this board, the opportunity to take an important step forward for the community. It's always the right time to do the right thing. Your time is now. Show the community that you can be the leaders we elected to work for all of the students and families of Lee County. I know you, and I believe that you can do this. Delay no longer. Redistrict now. Thank you.
James Davis.
I'm James Davis. I'm from Showing Up for Racial Justice. So once again, we are all together struggling to accomplish what we all want, an official leadership voice in providing the best possible education for our children and for all children. We all accept that no one segment of our diverse population is so disproportionately talented as to justify having sole authority over all the others in our diverse county. Yet sadly, that's what keeps happening, and the clock keeps ticking, and the current problems keep our, keep our current students from coming close to reaching their full potential. Resources keep being spent on Band-Aid solutions to problems caused by our failure to solve the bigger issues. What to do? The NAACP has presented a professionally-designed redistricting plan, which at least starts a process. The board's consulting attorney has raised concerns that this runs counter to a recent Supreme Court decision, a concern which the NAACP's attorneys who testified at that Supreme Court hearing find unwarranted. The board has chosen to let the clock run, hoping that the 2020 census will magically and cheaply solve a huge problem decades in the making. Again, sadly, it's the majority minorities not formally represented on the board who bear the burden of delay. So members of the board, those majority and minority students are all your kids, and they need your actions now. Thank you very much.
Stephanie House.
Good evening. My name is Stephanie House. I'm a concerned citizen, parent, grandparent, and member of Lee County. And I just wanted to bring back to your attention once again just a couple of terms for your own interpretation and definition. The term "single-member district," voted, allow voters who live within one geographical area to vote for a candidate who lives in the same geographical area. In these elections, communities within each district have a stronger, stronger voice in their district seat. At-large districts allow every voter in the county to vote for a seat in these elections. The majority in the county controls the seats. Two different terms, two different definitions, two different terms in voting. Then this other term, institutional racism. That comes back from something in the 60s, kind of hardens my heart, and something I don't care about too much. And maybe some people, maybe not your generation, but certainly mine, and I don't care to hear about it again, but that was during the civil rights era. Institutional racism. In institutional racism, it describes social patterns that impose opposite collections of institutional negative conditions that are imposed by institutions that oppress, oppress a group of people. And that can be any type of institution, including schools, prisons, and companies. But I did say schools. When you oppress your opinions and your decisions on a group of people, I beg your pardon, I'm getting emotional, aren't I? But when you oppress your opinions because you are one majority, then you put your beliefs on a group of people. And if you look beside you, next to you, around you, you're the only majority on one group. That means somebody else needs to represent a minority. And in Lee County, that what you call a minority is the majority in one district. It's time for a change. Do you know that you're the only county in the county, in the state of Florida that still has a particular majority on a school board that does not have a minority representation? I beg your pardon. You're one of the few counties in the United States of America that still has a school board that does not have a minority representation on a school board. It's too late. Your past due. Time for change is over. It's past due. You were supposed to do this in 2014. It's past time. I told you before, I've lived in other countries. It's time to change. Thank you.
Virginia Gottman.
Good afternoon. My name is Virginia Gottman. I am a Lee County Public School parent and a member of the NAACP. You've heard our legal arguments on this issue before. You've heard our evidence and social science-based arguments. You've heard us say that it's best for the children. Please also consider the moral argument. We live in the deep south. It's a part of our country that has a particularly rich history. It has a beautiful history. The history is also very, very ugly. None of us in this room is responsible for institutional racism. None of us invented it, but some of us still benefit from it. It's our moral responsibility to acknowledge the truth of that fact. We can be against racism. We can not be racist ourselves, but it's also our obligation to dismantle racism. You in this room have the opportunity to help undo our region's history of racism. It's time. It's the right thing. Please redistrict in 2017. Thank you.
Steve Sherman.
There are two statements from our history that point to the need for Lee County School Board to redistrict now. First is the doctrine of one person, one vote, that has guided our election process. The concept is to group people of similar demographics and voting patterns together within voting districts so that the elected official represents the will of the people and we continue the tradition of government of the people, by the people, and for the people. The districting maps drawn by Lee County were not affected by this concept because of at-large elections. All that changed when the school board went to seven members with five single-member districts. Now, the broad range of demographics and voting patterns must be considered in order to avoid the gerrymandering, gerrymandering that fair districts Florida outlawed. Board member Steve Twiber properly noted that he has never figured out why the Dunbar area is included in his district, which is dominated by North Fort Myers and Northern Cape Coral. Prior to 2011 redistricting, the Dunbar area was more correctly connected to the Ollie areas south of the river, and it had always been that way. Procedural and administrative delays are a disservice to the voters that believed your campaign comments that you would support redistricting. You even received endorsements based on that single issue, which brings us to the second state, the situation. Benjamin Franklin said, "Justice will not be served until those who are unaffected are as outraged as those who are." Justice in the form of voting rights can only be achieved by redistricting now. Thank you.
Dr. Chapman. Speaker number 11 is Anthony Thomas.
Until the Lee School District understands the ramifications of being lily-white over 100-plus years, where students of color now make up 57% of the student population in the public school system, and how it impacts performance standards, a system in which only 75% of the students graduate, we will continue to create a dysfunctional society. Complacency and delaying necessary change are how institutional racism survives. The minority students who attend Lee County Public Schools deserve better. We need to redistrict now. The present makeup of our school board simply creates and prolongs a direct line leading to school-to-prison pipeline, something the NAACP is determined to prevent. And you've heard this already, but in the words of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., "Justice too long delayed is justice denied." Dr. King also said, "Freedom is never voluntarily given by the oppressor. It must be demanded by the oppressed." That's what we are doing today, demanding justice. Redistrict now.
Mr. Thomas.
Thomas, I want to say that I concur with the NAACP that the, this board has made a decision earlier that they would have a study, they would do, they would go through the public process. And I really just think that if you're going to have a governing board and you're going to say something, you ought to say what you mean and do what you say. And the board said at a previous meeting that they wanted to study it. Let's have some meetings. Now, I don't know if this NAACP plan is the right plan, but I'm open. I have an open mind. I think Mary Fisher and Kathleen Morgan, we couldn't have gotten here without these people. Pam and Steve supported this in their election. I think we have school board members who want to do the right thing. I think they care deeply about issues of diversity and equity. But Dr. King said that the greatest stumbling block for the Negro is not the citizen council or the Ku Klux Klan. He said it was the white moderate because they preferred order over justice. So as we think about this... they preferred order over justice. So, as we think about this, yes, we got to have order. We got to do this in a timely fashion. We know that redistricting takes place every 10 years. So, yes, this would be a sort of a rule change. It normally doesn't happen this way. But what about justice? Let's talk about that word, justice, because I think it's important. I think we need to give these people an opportunity. You all have showed with your vote and placing this issue on the ballot, and the citizens of Lee County are not racist. 55% of them went to the polls, and even our 45% who didn't agree said, "We don't like this," but I don't think they had any ill motives or racial animosities toward the minority community. But I think on the issue of justice, we should move forward. Just let's have some workshops. There's only two districts, really, that are going to be affected by this, Pam's district and Steve's district. Now, I would say to my people and a lot of the people who are in the audience who support this, let not your hearts be troubled. If we don't get the redistricting this year, there's going to be a great election in 2008. And Pam is my friend. I supported Pam in her election four years ago. But if you just look, and I have studied the numbers very closely, if you look at the voter registration numbers in Lehigh, it will be very difficult for Pam, who is a Republican, to get elected in Lehigh. Lehigh Acres has the highest number of African-Americans and Latinos and Democrats. Democrats outnumber Republicans if you look at the latest numbers from the supervisor of election. So, I can promise you folk that in 2018, you will see the glass ceiling break. You will see an African-American on this school board. I know it's hard. I know you want to have it now. But don't let this be the end-all-be-all. So, I don't want to talk about this no more. The other thing I want to talk about is this stuff with Greg Atkins. And, you know, I said at the last meeting, I asked him a simple question. He can't answer. He called me, "You people..."
Mr. Thomas, your time's up, sir.
My time's up. All right. To be continued. Thank you.
Those are all the cards. Ms. Fisher?
Thank you. Next speaker is Kirk. Miss Sun.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Dr. Kirk Fazone, Service Unit Director with Island Coast FEA, working with Talc. I just wanted to say, excuse me, a few words about next week, which is Teacher Appreciation Week. Tuesday, May 9th, is National Teacher Day. And the National Education Association describes it as a day for honoring teachers and recognizing the lasting contributions that they make to our lives. So, teachers give so much, and especially in our current political climate, they get vastly less honor and respect than they deserve. Teachers deserve our thanks and appreciation, not only during Teacher Appreciation Week, but every single day. So, we each at least have one teacher that we can thank for guiding us and shaping us to live up to our highest personal potential and, you know, lifting us up to achieve all of our goals and dreams. I have probably two dozen teachers to thank, not just one. So, that's all I had to say about Teacher Appreciation Week.
Thank you. Crystal Johnson?
My name is Crystal Johnson. I'm a concerned parent and child advocate. I stand in support of the voters, minority children, and the NAACP for redistricting. I also want to take the time to address a personal issue with the paper-based FSA testing accommodations provided to children with disabilities. I was recently informed, after my daughter took a test prematurely, that she had not, she had to be tested three weeks prior to the Gen Ed children population. I was not notified prior to her testing, so she was therefore not prepared. This was very disheartening to her and myself because she wanted to do the best on this very important test. I was informed by the school, the district, and Department of Education that that is the policy, that children with this accommodation have to be tested three weeks prior to Gen Ed population because of the testing grading, you know, when they grade the test, when they can return them, those results in a timely fashion. Paper-based testing require more time. Well, I think that kind of just stinks, that a child with a disability loses three weeks of preparation than a child that doesn't have a disability. You get what I'm saying? That just didn't make sense to me. So, I'm asking you all today to make that an issue, that they need to do their job. Don't make that the burden of the child with a disability to lose three weeks of preparation. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Rivera?
Good evening. My name is Kalina Rivera, and I stand in support of the NAACP and the redistricting efforts. When discussions involving racism and discrimination come up, we often espouse all-American values of taking personal responsibility, correcting problems in our own families and neighborhoods, and not waiting for things to be handed to us. If the board does not allow communities to take care of their own needs and represent their own interests, they are undermining these all-American democratic values. Thinking that an all-white school board knows and understands the needs of minority students is paternalistic and condescending, and it goes against the value of personal responsibility. If the all-white school board were serving minority communities adequately, there would not be a need for redistricting. You've been hearing directly from members of the communities who are actively taking responsibility for creating change needed in their schools and communities, and yet you continue to stand in their way. By standing in the way of progress, you are impeding the ability of minority communities to act on their own behalf. By standing in the way of progress, you are demonstrating the value of holding on to power for the sake of power. It is time to get out of the way and put these all-American values to work on the school board by using the power that you have been handed to bring about meaningful and necessary change. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Ed Kelly?
Good evening. My name is Ed Kelly. I would just like to make a comment with a definition of a three-letter word. I'm quite sure most of you know the definition of this word, but sometimes it's good to reiterate. It's called "try," T-R-Y. To attempt to do or accomplish, to test the effect or result of, to endeavor, to evaluate by experiment or experience. I or we, the minority, would like to know, out of the 128 years of the Lee County School Board has been established, has redistricting ever been tried for minority representation? If not, could anyone truly say it won't work or make a difference, especially if it has not been tried? I found out a baby toddler would never try to walk. If a baby toddler never tried to walk, it possibly wouldn't. When my children were younger, I always told them to do their best in order, in other words, to try. So, if it doesn't work, at least they can say, "I tried." Lastly, but not least, I was taught that Thomas Edison invented the light bulb, but later found that Lewis Latimer invented the filament in which causes the light to illuminate an extended period of time. So, if Lewis Latimer would not have been allowed to try his invention, we probably would still be in the dark. Redistricting Lee County School District. Come on. Let's give it a try.
Thank you, sir. Michael Jeffrey? Michael Jeffrey? Okay, then I guess that's all the speakers. Okay. Regarding Mrs. Johnson's comments about not having noticed that her student would be tested three weeks before everyone else, can you have someone talk to her about that? Dr. Atkins?
Thank you. I just want to say that this board has listened to the comments. We respect your opinions and your requests. We continue to talk about change on a constant. In 2014, we did support, actively supported, and helped to get the vote for single-member districts when we came to five single-member districts and two at-large. We continue to respect your requests and to listen. This school district has done a lot to serve our minority, our majority-minority population, in that we have worked with the National Education Association in closing the achievement gap. We have many programs that address the needs directly of our minority students. We all deeply care about them. We want them to be successful, and we will continue to do so. So, it's my guess that this conversation will continue. Thank you.
Next on the agenda is approval of action items under the consent agenda. Board members, are there any agenda items you wish to pull for discussion under the unfinished business, tabled items portion of the agenda? Mrs. Morgan?
I have none.
Dr. Cockle?
None.
Mrs. LaRiviere?
None.
Mr. Toiber? Ms. Patrica? Mrs. Giovanni?
Well, I have a question.
Yes?
If I have a question about something that we're approving tonight, is this when I bring that up?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Yeah, the 6C.
6C. And do you have a page?
6C is the superintendent's recommendation.
I'm sorry. Yes. Okay, that's right.
Okay. Then hold on to that until we get to superintendent.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. And I have none. Is there a motion to approve the agenda's consent action items? Moved by Mr. Toiber and seconded by, I'm sorry, Ms. Patrica. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Included in the approval of the consent items on the agenda are resolutions proclaiming May 2017 as National Military Appreciation Month. Will any veterans please stand and be recognized? Thank you for your service. Another resolution proclaiming May 10th, 2017, as National School Nurse Day, as well as the week of May 7th through 13th, 2017, as National Teacher Appreciation Week, and May 9th, 2017, National Teacher Day. We thank our teachers for their dedication and their service. Next on the agenda is the superintendent's recommendations. Dr. Atkins, will you please present your recommendations?
Yeah, thank you. The first recommendation, I recommend board approval to piggyback Florida Department of Education bid for the purchase of 58 school buses awarded to multiple vendors for the period of May 2nd, 2017, through June 30th, 2017, for the one-time expenditure of $5,927,951, with an option to cancel deemed to be in the best interest of the district. Approval authorizes the superintendent to execute all related documents.
Thank you, Dr. Atkins. Board members, is there a motion to approve? Moved by Mrs. LaRiviere?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Patrica. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next recommendation, Dr. Atkins.
Next recommendation, I recommend board approval to award the contract for aluminum walkway covers and entry canopies and canvas walkway covers and entry canopies to Architectural Metals of Southwest Florida, Inc., Coastal Contracting, Florida LLC, and Marco Canvas and Upholstery, LLC. The contract will be in effect for three years, beginning May 2nd, 2017, through May 1st, 2020, with renewal options for three additional one-year periods upon written agreement of the vendors and the district at an estimated expenditure of $850,000. Approval authorizes the superintendent to execute all related documents.
Thank you. Board members, you've heard the superintendent's recommendation. Is there a motion to approve?
And I, and I will motion for discussion, right?
No, you just moved, motion to approve.
The motion to approve.
Yes. Okay. Moved by Mrs. Giovanni and seconded by Mrs. LaRiviere. Any discussion?
Yes. Okay.
Mrs. LaRiviere, I mean, Mrs. Giovanni.
The only discussion, we got a letter from this Mr. Mills regarding this, and so I just had a few questions because I read his letter, and so I just need clarification because...
Sure.
He, I guess he questioned how things were ranked, and so I just, I'm, you know, I'm back to the process again. And this is an RFP, is what I'm understanding. So, it's a little different than the RFQ and all that. So, just if you could help me with that, that's all.
Okay. Just a couple of, a couple of things, as I know, as it relates to the email. One was, you know, there was a concern relative to the capability of at least one of the firms having a professional engineer, and the nature of the work would require that. That was a concern that was addressed by Susan Malay. She actually reached out to the person who sent the email. One of the items that I just want to make you aware, this is much, this expenditure is actually much larger than we typically do. We have a lot of work upcoming, and normally the one contractor would probably be able to handle that work, but this is probably with, you know, well larger, or the number of contracts here, really, we felt it was in our best interest to have three vendors address that. Secondly, in the case of one of the third vendors, of which this gentleman, I think, was raising the most concern, it was, it was identified that that firm did not have engineer on staff. Our plan would be the work that that particular vendor would be doing would be that type of work that would not require that type of engineering approval. So, you know, major projects, if you have a school where, you know, you have to design an aluminum walkway for quite a distance, you know, that would be something that you'd have to have an engineer involved, and that would probably be one of the first two firms. The third one, if you had a repair or something like that, that's when that firm would be called in. So, we felt, you know, we had a lot of work. We needed three vendors. We would use, make sure we had professional expertise where it was needed, and where it wasn't needed, like, you know, the small repairs, we would be able to contract with somebody who was familiar with that work as well. So, again, I do know Susan Malay did reach out, and again, if there's additional questions, we'd be happy to answer them. But that was, from my understanding, that he was satisfied once you got back in touch with him. Is that correct? Okay.
Okay. Because, so you're, you could use all three of those, is what, was it what?
Right.
Okay, that's what I thought. Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
That was what was also confusing a little bit for me.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. All right, thanks.
All righty.
Thank you. And board members, any other discussion? Then I'll take the vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Last recommendation, Dr. Atkins?
Yes. Next recommendation, I recommend board approval to award the bid for refrigeration repair to Country Cooling and Heating, Inc. as primary vendor, and Johnson Controls, Inc. as secondary vendor, as indicated on the attached tabulation sheet for the period of May 2nd, 2017, through May 1st, 2020, with renewal options for three additional one-year periods and an estimated annual expenditure of $700,000 upon the written agreement of the vendors and the district. Approval authorizes the superintendent to execute all related documents.
Board members, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Seconded by Mrs. Patrica, seconded by Mr. Toiber. Any discussion?
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Dr. Atkins, will you please present your recommendations for this evening's public hearing items?
Yes, ma'am. First recommendation, I recommend board approval of the revisions of Policy 1.16, evaluation the superintendent and the school board attorney to remove the incorporation of the superintendent evaluation form in the policy. The effective date of this adoption shall be Wednesday, May 30th... The effective date of this adoption shall be Wednesday, May 3, 2017. Second recommendation, I recommend board approval of the revision of Policy 9.04, renovations and modifications to facilities to align with the current organizational structure of the district operations, to create overall process improvement for the facility modification requests resulting in better efficiency, decision-making, and internal customer service, and to remove the facility modification form from the policy. The effective date of this adoption shall be Wednesday, May 3, 2017.
Thank you, Dr. Atkins. At this time, I'll close the regular meeting at 7:31 and open the public hearing. And now, Dr. Atkins, oh, will you please present your recommendations? No, I'm sorry. At this time, the public is invited to speak on these two items. The time allowed for comment is three minutes. Is there anyone in the right section of the auditorium who wishes to speak? Anyone in the left section? Anyone in the back? Okay, I will now close this public hearing and reconvene the regular school board meeting of May 2, 2017. Now, Dr. Atkins, please restate your recommendations for this evening's public hearing items.
First recommendation, I recommend board approval of the revisions of Policy 1.16, evaluation of the superintendent and the school board attorney, to remove the incorporation of the superintendent evaluation form in the policy. The effective date of this adoption shall be Wednesday, May 3, 2017.
Board members, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. LaRiviere.
Second.
And seconded by Mrs. Patrica. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next recommendation, Dr. Atkins?
Next recommendation, I recommend board approval of the revision of Policy 9.04, renovations and modifications to facilities to align with the current organizational structure of the district operations, to create overall process improvement for the facility modification requests resulting in better efficiency, decision-making, and internal customer service, and to remove the facility modification form from the policy. The effective date of this adoption shall be Wednesday, May 3, 2017.
Board members, you've heard the superintendent's recommendation. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Patrica.
Second.
Seconded by Dr. Cockle. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. At this time, we will have board member comments or reports. Mrs. Morgan?
I have none this evening, thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Cockle?
I don't have any.
Mrs. LaRiviere?
Yes. I beg an indulgence. This afternoon, I neglected to mention the opportunity to go to the dancing classrooms competition, and Mr. Bauer has left for the evening. I want to give kudos to our foundation for all they do, for all of our students. Dancing classrooms is geared for our elementary students in highest need. The schools that participated in the program are Benita Springs Elementary, Cary Robinson Littleton Elementary, James Stevens International Academy, Hancock Creek Elementary School, Lehigh Elementary School, Tropic Isles Elementary School, and Franklin Park Elementary School. And what is absolutely amazing is they work with these fifth-grade students in 20 lessons, and they learn the skill of ballroom dancing. And in the process, they learn manners, they learn etiquette, they learn how to respect each other.
Thank you.
It is absolutely amazing to watch these gentlemen come up and say, "May I have this dance?" And see the young lady respond appropriately, and watch them escorted. I was constantly amazed at the way they carried themselves. They're also finding that within the fifth-grade students, a high, less incidences of referrals, and it provides our students with another opportunity to shine and glow. And kudos again to Lehigh Elementary. This year, they won the competition. And I just beg an indulgence.
Yes, ma'am.
If I may. I serve on the board for the human, Southwest Florida Regional Human Trafficking Coalition. Serves as an umbrella for all of the human trafficking groups. This is a very important piece that I believe very strongly in and making sure people are aware of. I want you to be aware, ladies and gentlemen, those of you watching online or via television, this weekend, the Laboratory Theater of Florida will present, be presenting a play, a documental, documentary form of play, Body and Sold. And I have flyers that I have printed that you are more than welcome to collect if you are interested in going to attend. Highly recommended for our students, however, no one should be attending, probably no one under middle school age. The, it's a great tool for understanding sexual exploitation, but for some students, it can open a can of worms for them when they're not quite ready to see it. So it's something to consider. Afterwards, there will be a panel discussion with the various agencies in the area, and you will begin, become aware of that. So I encourage people, those of you to participate, it was, thank you to Ms. Stillwell and the team for putting it on, including on the quick hits for the end of the week last week. And sadly, on Sunday afternoon, I had the bittersweet honor of attending the memorial service for Heidi Shen. You see, Heidi and I go back to when she came to Dunbar Middle School, and we had, you know, we've got a breakdown. Many people are saying, "Well, why didn't, why wasn't DCF called? Why, what, didn't certain things happen?" And I need to share with you what happens with our students, and the sharing of it, it has nothing to do with one student in particular, but there are too many layers, too many details, too many components that are not, that have to be considered. Here's our problem. DCF does get called, but after that, basically, the school system's hands are tied. We can provide counseling, we can provide whatever assistance we feel led to, but we are out of it as far as being part of the decision-maker. You see, the child protection system has many dysfunctional aspects, not to say that it is necessarily dysfunctional, but the lack of funding, the overabundance of paperwork that they are having to experience so that our DCF workers are, spend more time actually paper shuffling than out on the field working with the students involved, the quality of foster homes, parental rights, and the great need we have for guardian ad litem's to currently be the voice for those students who cannot find their voice. Right now, only 30% of the students who are in the legal system have a partner to come alongside as a guardian ad litem to help speak for them. People are not being served many times just because there aren't enough people who understand, know the situation, or know the needs. I encourage you, as a community member, do you have the capacity to foster? Do you have the capacity to spend time with a young person, whether it be, the time is really, maybe eight hours a month, but to be able to know, for that student to know that you are there with no agenda except to listen to their voice? See, too many of my former students fell through those cracks. Some are no longer living, some have been lost to human trafficking. I have a dream for a pilot program that our state legislature would maybe try, and wouldn't it be wonder if the school district of Lee County could be the one to pilot it? Dr. Bohatch and I talked about that dream earlier. But to have a setting situated so that we had our own DCF person designate, you see, teachers would call me from elementary school into the middle school and say, "Pam, watch out for this student. These are the things that we're seeing need to happen for this student. Can you please help intervene and intercede as necessary?" But then when that connection isn't there with another colleague, a lot of times, the students are missed. Sunday was bittersweet, mostly because I got to see some former students, and here are their successes. And one success was Jason, who is finishing his second semester at FSW and being quite successful, and listening to students get up who had, who were totally in need of intensive language intervention to express their thoughts, stand up and share the impact Heidi had had on their lives. I just, that's my cry-out, because we need people to help meet the needs of those students. Heidi is just one example of those needs.
Thank you for that. Mr. Toyber?
I have no comments.
Mrs. Patrica? Mrs. Giovinelli?
I have none.
You have none. I'll just say, Mrs. LaRiviere, I have my tickets for Body and Sold.
I have mine for Saturday night.
And I'm going Sunday afternoon. And, and I want to say that, as a former school counselor, I know what you're talking about, and I know that the human trafficking and the living in chaos and abuse is a huge problem for our kids, which definitely impacts their academic achievement negatively, but I'm happy to see that there is a heightened awareness and that many of our community members are partnering, partnering with us to help us provide services in the schools. And if I had one wish, it would be that we would, as my old Student Services Director, Dr. Charles Bell, said, unleash your power. If we would untie the hands of school counselors and let them practice as they are trained to do, I think that that could have a significant impact, because right now, they are not utilized in a way that is conducive to giving the students the support that they're trained to give, and they also, it's almost like a waste of their training and expertise, and many of our counselors are also licensed mental health people. So I'm hoping that we can continue to look at that and have them be able to work in the capacity that they should be. And thanks again to all of our teachers and to our staff members who work so hard. A special thanks to Attorney Rob Dodig for helping me this season with all of the legislative updates and interpretations, and also to Soretta Ralph and Brandy for briefing me on the new standards of excellence. So thank you all, and at this time, I'm going to ask our student representative, Ms. Cynthia Lewis, for her comments, if you have any.
I want to say, I completely agree with what Ms. LuVieri was saying, because human trafficking is a big issue, especially in Florida. Doing a research on that in my avid class, and a lot of people are not aware of that, and I completely go for what you're doing. And, and then they need a voice, they need somebody that they can go to, because we don't, we don't find out about those things until it's too late. So to add on to what she was saying, we have a lot of counselors, especially in our school, at East Lee County High School, where the kids should be able to feel as if the counselor is there to help them, and that they don't have to go, you know, like commit suicide or something like that, that our schools has somebody there for them. And I agree with what you're saying. And I want to thank the school board for this opportunity to be here tonight. It was a great experience. And I want to thank my principal, Mrs. Zellers, for coming here. She is a very, a very good lady and a very good principal. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Cynthia. Mr. Martin?
Nothing to report, thank you.
Thank you. And Dr. Atkins?
No comments this evening, other than to say, I do appreciate the discussion this afternoon, the challenging questions, the comments. Dr. Desmorz and I were just debriefing after the budget workshop, and you've given us some good direction, and looking forward to the 16th.
Thank you, and we are too. And again, a final thank you to Cynthia, not only for being here this evening, but for serving very beautifully on our student advisory committee and providing a lot of input on a lot of topics. So thank you, and our next scheduled board meetings, May 16. We have a briefing meeting at 2:00 p.m. and a workshop to follow that, and then the regular school board meeting at 6:00 p.m. At this point, having no other business to come before this body, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Toyber, seconded by Mrs. Giovinelli. And all in favor?
Aye.
This meeting's adjourned. Safe home, everyone.